...at 12121 West North Avenue. And we will begin tonight's board meeting with a moment of silent reflection, please. Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Kroner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. Our first item is public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anybody that would like to comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our presentation for this evening. Jefferson Principal Dean Niemore, fourth grade teachers Debbie Clark and Aspen Erickson, along with six of their students from last year, will present student projects created last school year. These projects were designed to be cross-curricular and were created to add rigor to the fourth grade curriculum. Some projects required the fourth graders to research and then design Google presentations based on the depth-of-knowledge framework, allowing for student choice and enrichment. Other projects extended student learning through writing and speaking following the district curriculum. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Jeff Hanscher, fifth grade teacher at Jefferson, who I believe has some of these students this year. So, Mr. Niemore, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Erdl. First, we'd like to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to showcase just one of the wonderful aspects of Jefferson Elementary. I am Dean Niemore, the principal of Jefferson, and along with me tonight are Debbie Clark and Aspen Erickson, along with actually seven of their students from last school year, so that would make them current fifth graders at Jefferson. We have tonight with us Dominic Arnt, Maddie Bartz, Ella Cousins, Bella Drewick, Tess Murrah, Lauren Prantel, and Henry Weisong Grass. So, they will help do the presentation this evening along with their teachers from last year. And I was going to also acknowledge Mr. Hanscher for being here, supporting his fifth-grade students and colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Hanscher, for coming. This is my first year as principal of Jefferson, after spending the previous ten as the principal of Lincoln, and I am finding on a daily basis that we have many wonderful educational opportunities happening for every child at Jefferson. Today, Mrs. Clark and Mrs. Erickson and the seven students will take you through just a few of them, so I am going to turn it over to the experts right now.[220.12][220.12](Laughter).
Well, again, I want to thank you all for letting us be here tonight and sharing our Jaguar excellence, and both Aspen and I loved having all of these kids in class, and I just wanted to share with you how we chose these students. We sent emails to all their parents so that any of them could come, and so these were the kids that said that they wanted to share something with you. So, I'm going to give them a round of applause right away because I think that's fantastic. They didn't know what to expect, and so they're here tonight just, you know, trying to learn about what you all do, and then hopefully you'll learn something about what they're doing. So, I want to go on to the next slide. So, one of the things that we worked on a lot last year in some of our professional development classes at Jefferson during staff meetings and sometimes even during PLCs was learning how to do depth-of-knowledge projects, really increasing the rigor in our classrooms, and this is a sample of something that we designed using some of the verbiage that would increase their understanding and increase what they wanted, what we wanted them to accomplish. So, you can see at the beginning, there were four choices here, it's a little hard to see, and then they had different assignments that they could choose from. This really enables kids to not only have that independent choice about what they want to do, but it really engages them and it gives them an opportunity for enrichment and to really, you know, extend their learning. So, we based it all on treasures, on materials, so the books that are on the right side are from our treasures, our curriculum from the district, but then we took that further and tried to really find some engaging activities that they would need to do and to research and then have some type of presentation or project that they would share with others. Aspen, you want to say anything else about that?[356.12][356.12](Laughter). Okay, so, tonight, I'm going to turn this over now to them, basically. So, these are some of the projects and presentations that have come up through the course of the year, and again, they are current fifth graders now, but we have this all saved on Google Drive, so it was really easy for us to pull it all together using technology in our classrooms, and they didn't have to do any work, really, other than to just go back and find what they wanted to share, so that was really fun. So, Ms. Maddie?
So, hi, I'm Maddie, and I'm going to show you my figurative language presentation. So, what we did was we had to learn about the different kinds of figurative language. So, the first kind we learned about was similes. What you had to do was you had to give the meaning of the different kind of figurative language. So, for a simile, a simile is a comparison between two objects using the words like or as. Then you had to give an example, so as wise as an owl, which means very wise, so, and you have to use a picture to kind of describe what the example is. So, I did an owl, and then you have to do a poem. So, I also did metaphor, personification, alliteration, assassinence, monopia, hyperbole, and idiom.[462.62][462.62](Cough) So, yeah, that's what I did.
Wow.
I did this to become a better writer and use figurative language in my writing.
Okay.[472.03][472.03](Applause).
All right, next up, we have Tess.
Hello, I'm Tess. So, I, we read stories about, like, different national parks, and I had a book about the Badlands, and it was really cool because I got to share some of my experiences from me being there with my class, and we did this to understand, like, the main idea of different books and help us summarize, and also to find, like, each section what it was about.
So, can we ask ongoing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, basically, you took a book you read, and you took your experiences, and then you created a brochure?
Yes.
To encourage other people to go and to tell them what it was like?
Yeah.
That looks really fun.
And then, like, inside of it, I, like, put, this is, like, the outside, and then I put, like, pictures of me and my sister and my family on it, and also, then I had, I actually wrote, like, the, where I got the information of at the top.
And you mentioned the word summarize. That was probably the main thing you were trying to do, take a lot of information?
Yeah, and then, like, summarize it all.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else, questions for Tess? Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Lauren, and I'm going to talk about the technology that we used in fourth grade. In fourth grade, we used a lot of documents and presentations to put in some of our learning that we learned about in class and then present it to the class and get graded on it. I like this because we got to put in what we thought was the best part into our summary in our document, and then we got to slide through and add stuff like pictures and explanations. We also went on some games like Khan Academy and Manga High, which are games that make it easier to do multiplication, addition, and division, so you don't think of it as multiplication or number facts, you just think of it as playing a game.
What kind of equipment did you use? Did you just use one thing? Did you use something handheld, or did you use a?
We used Chromebooks that were used in the class, that were sent around the school so that everybody could use a Chromebook and log in and use it.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Thanks.
Hi, my name is Bella Drewick, and I will be showing you my weather forecast project from fourth grade. I use different types of technology like Microsoft PowerPoint and various weather websites to look up research, past and future research about a city that we had to forecast the weather for, and I used animations from Microsoft PowerPoint to help my audience on, kind of, feel like they were sitting at home and watching the weather, and the, I really thought that this was very fun, this is a very fun project to do, and I'm looking forward, in my year of fifth grade, to learn more about science and technology.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I have a question. What's your favorite climate?
I think, well, that's a hard one, because...
You can have more than one.[755.41][755.41](Laughter).
Well, I like when it gets colder and it snows because I like to play outside with my sister, and I like when it's warmer because I don't need to walk around in heavy snowpants or boots or jacket or something like that.[770.12][770.12](Laughter).
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Oh, one comment.
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Those PowerPoint skills are very useful. That's not easy to do what you did.
No, it isn't.
I've tried.[784.73][784.73](Laughter). You have done better than I've done.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ella. Last year, we got a chance to write a book, and it could be anything we wanted, and we had to have, like, we had to do a rough draft and then edit it and type it on the computer, and...
Well, hi, good evening, my name's Dominic, and what we got to do is, we got to create our own story. Our teacher said that we could come up with any kind of story, a lot of, some kids did cooking, some kids did poems, and some just made up their own stories, and it helped the, making the free books helped us become a better author and a better writer.
Wow, that's great.
And we got to have it published and a free book.
Very nice. Yeah. So, who did the haikus? Which, is that one of you two?
That one actually was a class book.
Oh, that was a class one, okay.
So, in addition to the individual student books, we actually did a class book where all of the students got to input on a separate page, and the publishing company that does this, it's all free, and we get to keep our published stories, which is really exciting. And the students had been asking, are our books here yet? Are they here yet? And I said, oh, they're finally here, and it was very exciting to see all of our hard work published in a book.
Haikus are fun. I bet that was fun with fourth graders.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet. Somebody mentioned editing. What's editing? Dominic?
It's where you write something and you send it in to your author, or, for example, we send it in to Miss Erickson to get it edited by her and to write her final copy.
And what did she do when she edited? Did she just read it, sir?
She took it home and then she had to read, she had to read all twenty books, and...
What would she do? Did she do anything with it?
She, like, fixed our writing mistakes and added commas in that we missed.
Awesome. Dominic, what was the name of your book?
Mine was When I Met Michael Jordan.
Oh, very cool. Ella, what was yours?
If I Was a Spy.
Sounds intriguing. I have a question for both of you. There is an author who just wrote a children's book with no pictures. How important are pictures to a story?
Well, they're important because it helps you understand the story more, and it explains what it, your words explain what the pictures are.
Great. Wow.
Yeah, what she said.[994.12][994.12](Laughter).
Do any of you want to talk anymore about your awesome projects?
We have one more.
Oh, you do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm Henry, and I did a project on cave adaptations. It was mainly to research, learn to research, and present it to people. Yeah. So, yeah, this is my presentation that I made.
Can you read it? Go ahead and read it.
I'm sorry.
Like other cave dwellers, troglobites have evolved their senses of smell, hearing, and touch. Many troglobites are blind because their environment is dark. Some lose their skin pigment because they don't need camouflage. Other adaptations, other adaptation, another adaptation is the loss of body parts, like wings, because they move around very little. Their diet evolves to consist of mainly scavenged food, including carcasses and guano, so they don't have to travel far. Overall, there are seventy-seven thousand species of troglobites that we know of. Every time we explore a new cave, there's a chance to find a new species that has found a new way to adapt. Thanks for watching.[1117.33][1117.33](Laughter).
Where did you get all that information, Henry? Did you have to research?
Yeah, I forgot the exact websites, but it was mainly through researching on the Internet.
Okay.
Before they go...
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Before you leave, I just need to say that these skills, I know you had fun, you had fun, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, these are very useful adult skills that you learned, that, you know, to have an editor, all of the newspaper writers have editors who edit their articles, the presentations, how you, you know, brought things down to just the core ideas. These are very adult things that you did, and you did them very well, so you should be very proud of what you did. And you had fun, which sometimes the adults don't have fun.
And to your teachers also, thank you for going the extra mile, and thank you so much for being here tonight, especially when you had to remember things from last year. That's awesome.
Well, we thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share what we do at Jefferson, just a small part, and we have great things planned for these kids. This is a class of 2022, right? Twenty twenty-three, no, twenty twenty-two. So, hopefully, some of these people will be present on the school board and be handing you your high school diplomas from the Wauwatosa School District, so congratulations, you guys, nice job.
Very nice. Thank you.[1224.75][1224.75](Applause). And thanks, Mr. Niemore.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Okay, I love the keyhole. I like the keyhole. That's awesome. It's so great. Thank you so much for coming. It's wonderful.
I do want to know where Dominic shops.
Pardon?
He looks sharp.
Yeah, he's amazing. Okay, I believe then we will have to move on, darn, to the approval of our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. Our first action item in human resources, Mrs. Fee, please.
I believe Mrs. Mielefeld is reading the motion.
I am sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Mrs. Mielefeld, I'm sorry, we had to change that.
There are two items this evening under human resources. The first item is salary increases for administrative assistants, educational assistants, food service employees, select employees, and administrators. It is recommended that the school board approve salary increases for the following employee groups effective July 1, 2014, as presented in the preceding executive session. For administrative assistants, a 2% wage increase at a cost of $32,806, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $26,219. For educational assistants, a 2% wage increase at a cost of $41,731, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $10,507. For food service employees, a 1% wage increase for food service employees at a cost of $3,091. For select employees, a 2% wage increase at a cost of $30,834, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $9,137. For administrators, a 2% wage increase at a cost of $59,814. The salary increases do not apply to summer school and do not include promotions and/or adjustments. Item number two is a superintendent contract. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2014 through 2016 contract for Dr. Philip Erdl as superintendent of schools with a salary of $172,023 for the 2014-2015 school year, and I so move.
Okay, second. Thank you, Mrs. Casey. Board members? Mrs. Fee?
Thank you. I would ask for a separate action on these two items, please.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak to one of them?
Yes, please. With regards to item number one, since the agenda was drafted, I believe that it's come to light that the numbers listed include benefits, and in order to clarify the actual salary amount of increase, I would move to amend the motion to read as follows, and I'm sorry to go through it, but I think the only way to do this is to read the whole thing again. It is recommended that the school board approve salary increases for the following employee groups effective July 1, 2014, as presented in the preceding executive session. For administrative assistants, 2% wage increase at a cost of $28,483, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $22,748. For educational assistants, 2% wage increase at a cost of $36,270, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $9,119. For food service employees, 1% wage rate increase for food service employees at a cost of $2,695. For select employees, 2% wage increase at a cost of $26,755, and authorization for regular step increases during the 2014-2015 school year on the employee's anniversary date at a cost of $7,938. For administrators, 2% wage increase at a cost of $52,379. Salary increases do not apply to summer school and do not include promotions and adjustments. And I would ask that unless there is an objection, the motion be amended by unanimous consent.
Mr. Meyer?
May I ask for a clarification? At some point, you read wage increase, at another point, you read wage rate increase? Was there a distinction intended?
No, the distinction was not intended, I apologize. My only intent was to change the numbers.
Okay, so it is to be, as I wasn't in the executive session, I just wanted to understand whether the word rate being removed had any significance to it, or...
It did not, I misread, I apologize.
Okay.
Again, my only intent is to change the numbers as stated, and I can go through them if you'd like individually.
No, thank you, I just needed to know that whether you wanted or didn't want the consistency of wording between the different groups.
I appreciate the clarification, I simply misspoke.
Okay, thank you. Can we agree to unanimous consent for this amendment? Board members? Okay. Thank you. Is there any community comment on the amended motion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Galante, may we have a vote, please? Or, excuse me, a roll call?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. Are we going to, I'm sorry, are we going to vote on this?
I have no amendment to add, number two, or a comment.
Okay, thank you. So, we can move on to number two. Any comments, Board members, please? Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Erdl. This past year, the feel of things has reached a point where I remember Mrs. Weber saying that we want to get back to a place, a culture, a way of doing things where people in the area start to ask, what is Wauwatosa doing? And I'm having the feel that we are there, that there are a great many things where the school district is receiving very positive notoriety for its academic accomplishments, and so it has a different feel than what we had a while back, and it seems that there's some kind of sparkle that's returned to our academics, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Other Board members? Okay. I guess I would add too, being in some buildings today, there is a different feel, and people are working really hard, people are trying to keep up with all the changes, and they're doing a great job of it, but they acknowledged all the support they're getting from the Board, from Dr. Erdl, from Central Office. They were very specific in their comments about implementation of new projects and what kind of help they're getting, so, and that starts at the top, it starts with expectations that are appropriate and that can be met.
So I also would thank Dr. Erdl for this last year of service. And I think, I think we're kind of ready to really move on. There was a family at Washington School today that came to visit who's had a student currently in MPS. They live in Tosa. They, their daughter was going to the German immersion school, and they were visiting Washington School with the likelihood of enrolling her, her there based on their neighbors whose kids go to Washington School.
So all of that is positive, and we appreciate it. I would also note that when we prepared Dr. Erdl's evaluation, this amount of 172,023 represents a 3% salary increase. Is there any community comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a report from Dr. Erdl.
The recommendation I have for you is that we change the bylaws related to the broadcasting of our school board meetings. Since February, our equipment failed that allowed us to broadcast on Time Warner on TV. And since that time, we have not broadcast. We've continued to broadcast them on the website and also have DVDs available for checkout from the district office. We have not heard any concerns about that. The cost to replace the equipment at a minimum just to play board meetings on Time Warner, that does not include AT&amp;T, U-verse, or the other options that are out there for TV, is between $10,000 and $11,000 just to replace the equipment that failed. So my recommendation is that we do not broadcast the meetings. 1.9% of the people that responded to our district survey relied on that medium for their information. So we know from the survey from last spring, there's not a lot of people that do respond to that. I know everybody here has had individuals that might have said that that's where they watch them, and they've, you know, they've watched them on, on TV over a long period of time. But as time changes, technology changes, my recommendation is that we continue to broadcast them and even give further consideration down the road of live broadcast of school board meetings as well so people could watch them live as well as being posted after the meeting.
Board members, comments, questions? And then?
Have a comment, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know that I have enough information to support this, this particular change, especially the broadcast of the meetings. First, $10,000 is really, is not very much money to spend for equipment that hundreds of people might benefit from. And my other question is, I don't really know if we have a good idea of how many people actually do watch these. The district survey, if I remember correctly, went, only went out to district families. So I, until we get some information from all the other citizens in Wawatosa, which primarily be the older citizens that weren't surveyed, I'm not really comfortable with reducing the amount of exposure the district gets within the city. And so I think, I would like to hold off on this until maybe we can do some more research to find out exactly how many people do watch on TV. I have to say, when it was operating, the majority of comments I got in the community were from people that saw items on TV and watched the board meetings on TV. So I'm just afraid that we might be cutting out a significant group of older citizens that don't use the internet to gain access to information. And then this way, it's going to just permanently limit their ability to keep up with what's going on in the schools. So I would like to hold off on this until we get some more information to find out exactly how common it is for people to watch on TV throughout the entire city.
When, when this breakdown of the equipment occurred, we did discuss this at a board in-service. And I know that it was questioned whether or not we wanted to continue, but there was no consensus by the board to direct Dr. Erdl to pursue anything different. I'm not sure if anything has changed since that time. And I don't recall whether Mrs. Casey or Mr. Bodden were there, but I know we had that exact discussion we're talking about. And there was, like I said, no, no, no one wanting to push it ahead to fund it or find another way to do it. Were you two present?
I don't think so. I don't recall.
So, do you have any thoughts on that?
Does the, does the city still broadcast their council meetings?
Yes.
We do, okay. I personally can't justify spending that money and replacing that equipment.
Okay. That's kind of, okay. Mr. Bodden?
My bias, my bias would be to keep it as is and spend the tenor, $11,000, too. Just because I've heard from people in my neighborhood that are not, do not have kids attending schools, but they do watch it, even if it is a few, so.
Dr. Erdl, when we talked about this too, you talked about how many people have Time Warner and that it would only be Time Warner, correct?
Correct. So I can't get board meetings at my house because I have AT&amp;T, U-verse. I mean, that, I guess that's another question, because of the board policy, are we driving people that really want to watch board meetings on TV to go and get Time Warner? And are we, are we in violation of, I don't know.
I, I don't know that that deserves it. Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Thank you, and I have an alternate view as well, and I have DirecTV, so. But I would like to see us moving in a, in a more forward, modern direction. And really, the internet, viewing information over the internet, podcasting, YouTubing, whatever, is really how we're moving forward. We, we do definitely want our citizens to keep up with us and providing information on DVDs. And, you know, I, I think you can, maybe, you know, we can have some copies at the library if that's more convenient. But I do think that moving forward and the, and the direction to a more modern way of giving information, I think, is important. I also wanted to mention, there is another change in this document to the minutes. And, and we're bringing current, our practice of ma, of making sure that we have approved minutes posted on our website. So there are many different ways to access the school board meetings, the minutes, the agendas. And of course, all of us are accessible, the seven of us, you know, including all of the district staff. So I would like to see us moving in, in this direction because I can see on the other side, if we're going to be thinking about replacing the equipment and Time Warner, what do we do for U-verse, what do we do for any other television-type technology that comes forward? You know, I'm certain it will be a lot more than just that smaller dollar amount.
Thank you. Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. I understand some of the argument about the different cable companies, but I don't think it's appropriate really to consider that data too strongly unless we have the numbers. I mean, it'd be nice to know exactly how, what the proportion is in the city of who can get one company or another. The other aspect is, there are a number of homes without computers. So is it fair for people without computers, that don't have access to computers, to not have access to the only online method that we have? Which I don't think we should expect people to drive to the library to get DVDs if they're used, especially if they're older citizens and are used to watching it in their home. But that's just my position on that. I do have a comment about the minutes part of it, though, because that was something that concerned me. I looked online today. The bylaws say the approved minutes shall be posted to the district's website. One thing I wasn't sure, by putting the word approved in there, does that change anything that we do? Don't we normally post the approved minutes? So that, that isn't changing anything, okay? But what does concern me, there's no time limit associated with that. And we know currently, when we switched over to the new website, I think only have two years' worth of minutes and agendas on the website. And I think we should have more than that. And I think at one point, the board decided, and I thought it was agreed upon, that the IT people would restore the rest, you know, a certain number of years. But I think if we're going to allow, if we're going to move in the direction of mainly online access, I would like to see us have the agenda and minutes go back maybe six, seven, eight years so there's, information's accessible. I think one important reason for that is sitting up here right at the board table. The board members that have been on here the longest have the access to more information than board members that have been on here the least. And for example, if I wanted to look up something that happened three years ago, I could go to my email and search for all the agendas. I'd have to do it by hand because we don't have an electronic system that will do that. But I could go back three years and find something that happened at a meeting. The newest board members wouldn't do that because they wouldn't have email that went back that far. So I think it's important so that for the community and for the board that we all have access to the same amount of information and can utilize it, you know, however, at least for the board, however it best fits the way that we want to do our job. But I think we should at least all have access to the same amount of information. And I would hope that the board could come to an agreement to at least put a significant number of years back on the web as it used to be before we switched websites.
Mr. Meyer?
Just a point of process about the posting of the minutes. We did not agree as a board because we did not vote. No action of the board unless there's a vote. That said, there was discussion, and Dr. Erdl did commit to, on his own initiative, to returning more years of minutes to the website. And I definitely would like to see that as well. With regards to the, the Time Warner equipment question, I'm a little divided on this, but in the end, you have to go in a modern direction that's more economical. And I think if we go to the web-based, DVD-based distribution channel exclusively, it is an incentive for us to find more up-to-date ways to reach everyone rather than rely on captive distribution channels that require paid subscriptions such as one, one particular vendor without considering other vendors. Now, that said, if we bring this to a vote and it fails, I ask that we bring the expenditure to a vote in the following meeting. That if we won't, if, if we defeat the change to the policy, then I think everybody should have to vote to spend the money to implement the, the old policy.
Well, I have a suggestion. If I am reading this correctly, the way these changes are brought to us tonight reflects current practice. Correct? Since our equipment broke down, I'm just starting, I'm not done. Is that, everybody agree?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's not our intended practice, it's...
It's current practice. We haven't been televised.
It's our in-fact practice because the equipment failed.
Right. And I, where I was going to go next is to say, we have had both of these discussions, as you said. We haven't given direction to Dr. Erdl. So he brought this forward to bring it up to date to where we're at. My suggestion would be to vote on this next time. But to meet as a board and to come up with something to give Dr. Erdl, to tell him what we want. Do we want them televised? How much are we willing to pay? How many years of minutes do we want accessible on the website? We can't have him guessing how many you want and how many I want and how many Mike wants. So we need to figure this out before we can bring a, an action together. The other option is just to not bring this forward at the next meeting for a vote until we have that other information.
Mrs. Fee?
Thank you. I just wanted to throw my two cents in. I'm of two minds, like Mr. Meyer, on this because I do think that the majority of the people who watch on television are older citizens who may not be as internet savvy as the rest of us are in, in the modern technology that we've been talking about. On the other hand, just like I don't want to spend $10,000 or $12,000 on new tables, I don't want to spend $10,000 or $12,000 on equipment that isn't really going to be used by many people. I know that only 1.9% responded, but I agree that that was not really the entire population of the city, and so we don't really know how many people watch. At the time that we had our conversation about this at the in-service, one of the comments I threw out was, well, let's not broadcast and see what happens. And if people respond, then we'll know that we might need to spend the money on this. So to me, the proof is sort of in the pudding. If no one's complaining, then we might not need to spend the money. But I will say, I don't think the summer is a fair test of that. And we're just getting into the fall. So I personally would like to see this put off for maybe two more meetings as a more fair representation of are people missing them? Because I think over the summer, people don't watch as much. And so we might not have those people saying, wait a minute, where are the board meetings, yet. So I am fine with the change unless people start responding that they want to see these on TV. So that's my two cents.
And just to clarify, the last meeting that was broadcast on TV was in early February of last year.
Okay.
And are you in agreement that we should discuss as a board if we have a parameter for expenses?
Sure.
And the piece about the agendas?
Yes, because I don't think we have any, have any information on that.
Yeah, and again, we've talked about this before.
If we're going to broadcast, we should broadcast. And, but that's a bigger spectrum than $10,000 or $12,000 for Time Warner, and that's a different conversation.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
I agree with everything that Mrs. Fee said, including the point that we need some time to hear what people think about this based on their experience. But then to learn that the last broadcast was early February, and we've already gone March, April, May, nobody's complained to me. I think we've had that experience, and we have other issues to deal with. So I'd rather we just bring this to a vote, and based on what the results of the vote are, we just, we move on to the next step in our decision process about how to deal with this.
Mrs. Casey?
If I may, to speak to Mrs. Muehlfeld's point, I do think if you look at the socioeconomic status of the community which we live in, that families are, are kind of giving more iPods and iPhones to grandparents as gifts to kind of stay in touch with their family and kids, especially kids going off to college and things like that. I'm so impressed. I remember my grandmother, at 98, we got her a device in which she could email her grandchildren, and that was so impressive, and she just embraced that. The other point is that I did, since I've been on school, received one comment about the broadcast, school board meetings, and somebody said, what happened to them? Because I liked falling to sleep to them at night. And that was my husband. And lastly, I...
He's a big fan?
Big fan, big fan. And lastly, I, I just, please take this in the right way. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this.
Yeah, I agree. And that's why, that's why this was brought to reflect current practice and to reflect the fact that we have discussed this in in-service. So I...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Muehlfeld, please.
I have one more comment. I just want to clarify that the, the change before us to the minutes, it doesn't, it doesn't specify a timeline, and we haven't specified a timeline. The only change is to bring it current to our, our already, our practice of what we are doing. So there is, so if there, if, if there is a amended proposal to a timeline in the policy, that would have to be brought forward as an amendment at the next meeting.
And I personally would not propose that. I think it's a manager, managerial thing.
Mr. Meyer?
What we've done in the past is that the superintendent, upon hearing comments at the first reading, has discretion to change the, the motion. And he does have discretion to insert a time limit on himself based on his managerial judgment of what's a reasonable time for him to get them posted to the website, the minutes posted. And then that way, the board wouldn't have to have the motion to amend that he could, based on practical realities, specific, insert in the motion how long he would like to ha, you know, he could put his own, he could set his own... his own, he could set his own deadline, so to speak.
And I'll have a comment.
Yes.
Based on what Mrs. Milfeld just says, I'm a little confused. Is the suggestion that if we pass it the way it is, the approved minutes shall be posted on the district website, which don't include beginning or end date, that if, since we're only posting two minutes, do you think that this implies the bylaws are approving two years' worth of postings?
Okay. I'm just, I mean, all I'm saying is, it doesn't have a timeline. It basically says, "Minutes of the preceding meeting shall be approved by the board at its first order of business at the next regular meeting." It's really just talking about the posting of approved minutes, that's really the only change, and the other change, and, and that they're posted to the district website, and they're, we're striking the Board of Education in this, in the following paragraph, and, and inserting superintendent because they're obviously in the office of the superintendent. I think those are applicable changes, they follow our practice, there's really no need for an additional number of years of minutes. That's really, I think, in a, that's really, I think, a, a management decision, and Dr. Erdl has, you know, can talk with the board, get our sentiment. If we need that to come to a vote, okay, I don't see why we should.
Yeah, I don't see why.
But okay if we want to, but the, in my opinion, that is not what this policy is being changed to say.
Right.
May I?
Um, one more comment, but then in, in response to Mrs. Casey, we have spent a lot of time on this, this meeting and prior meetings, so...
I think the setting of the reasonable amount of time to get something on the website, that's based on management input. I think the idea of how many years the board's own minutes of our official meetings remain on the website, I think that's a board decision based on our responsibilities to set our relationship with the community.
Thank you. Okay, I, I would like to bring this back. I'll talk to Dr. Erdl.
Well, we need a motion to curtail debate if you want to do that.
Pardon me?
This is no motion, this is just a review.
I'd just, I'd like to make one more comment, please.
Okay.
Um, the reason I'm pushing for consideration of the number, increasing the number of years of minutes and agenda items that are on the website is because we had many, many years on there before, and the reason there are fewer now, it was a decision made by someone in administration when the new website went up. That wasn't a board decision. So I would just ask, would the board do, does discuss it, because that decision wasn't made by the board to reduce the number of years that were on there.
So noted, we will. I'll talk to Dr. Erdl to see what form I will bring this back for a vote in, at our next meeting, and receive from there. Um, uh, let's see, is there any community comment? Any community comment on this report? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I think that's it, right? Okay. Um, so may I have a motion at this time to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene in conference room A into a board in-service regarding the effectiveness project? Um, and as the in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained at this meeting. May I have a motion, please? It's removed.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee, and Mr. Meyer, and, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?